All right, I will call the meeting to order at seven.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I think so. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion and then Nick fill in for chair tonight, and I'll second it.
All those in favor? Three, opposed, abstained, motion carries. I'll look for an approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Additions, subtractions? None. All those in favor? That's everybody. Public announcements.
Ken Fredette, Wallingford resident, had notified us, I think, yesterday that he would like to speak during public comment.
Thank you.
Is this my podium here? Backup? I'm confused. I'm used to having a platform.
You can pick me up almost anywhere, Ken, if it or not.
Well, I'm Ken Fredette from what?
Right where he's at.
Yeah, right there.
I'm good? Okay, I'm Ken Fredette from Wallingford. I served as school board member for 20 years, and I thought I was done with it a little over six years ago in March of 2018. But this past March, some of my like-minded friends who support public education reached out to me and invited me to join a group they were forming up called Friends of Vermont Public Education. And you can find out information about us at savvtpubliced.org. It's all lowercase, all one word, savvtpubliced.org. And I'm going to give you copies. As you know, the increase in property taxes was a big issue at the end of the most recent legislative session. And part of the big bill, what they call the big bill, the budget bill, was to form this commission, yet another commission that Vermont has formed up to look at education issues. And this one is called the Commission on the Future of Public Education in Vermont. It's a mouthful. Another member of the Friends Steering Committee and I attended their first meeting on July 15th. And there's a synopsis of that meeting on our webpage that I just mentioned. Greg and I, his name's Greg Hughes, Greg and I plan to be there again for their second meeting, which is this coming Monday, the 26th, and we both plan to provide input. That input is going to be, in this case, on financial aspects. The cost containment for education is the main driver of this commission at this point in time. And we have some very specific thoughts to share on that issue. But we also want to keep everybody's eye on the prize of student achievement. We don't want this commission to just be about money. It's about students as well, so. There's going to be a lot going on in the next few months, and there is a concern, a big concern, about how the timeline of the commissions work is going to intersect with school boards developing their FY '26 budgets. Their preliminary report, the very first report this year, there's another one, another couple of them maybe next year, but their initial report, so the legislature can come up with bills, and I'm off script here, I'm ad-libbing, but, is due December 1st of this year. So that's not really going to work very well for y'all working on your school budgets. And that's been pointed out to the commission, so they've got their work cut out for them. So please check the postings at the Friends of Vermont Public Education and ask to join our mailing list if you like, and I know some of you are already on it. The more voices we have, the better we will be heard. And my email is on the bottom of this, I just, I have extras. If you want the extras.
Actually, I'm counting. I think that's enough to go around the table, and then we'll have it in minutes for the folks who are virtual.
And I can answer any questions of clarification. I know it's not a back and forth, but I just wanted to make you aware of what's going on. I'm sure you're aware, but Brian.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you, everybody, for what you're doing.
Thanks, Ken.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Any discussion?
Thank you. Have a good night.
Was there any other public comment?
None that I was aware of. Any virtual folks? Looking like no.
Seeing none. We'll look for an approval of the minutes from eight, seven.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Lynn, second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yeah, I just have a couple of typos. I guess I read closely, or just my brain couldn't fill in, so. On page three, paragraph, I don't know which paragraph, Josh Squire asked about the cost of house repairs for the couch screens, but I think that's touchscreens.
That has been fixed.
It's already been.
Pat came over and showed me some typos.
Oh, okay, so you got them all.
Mixed them up and reposted them just before this meeting.
Okay. There were like three of them. Okay. Perfect. That's it.
Did Pat have the same three that you had?
Oh, okay, let's see.
His too, sure.
Then the 11 foundations bid update, I think the word should be work.
Right.
And then in.
Great, great.
And then personnel. After Sean Robinson, Mill River principal, come to a score, a board meeting. Those them? Oh, and then.
And principals.
And principals. And then I was, I thought the word people, she will also be discussing how people can sign up, and I was, I thought it'd be members, should be members. Other than that, all right, we both did it. Maybe we should get together.
We appreciate a good proofreading, we really do.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's unanimous. Up next is the high school alternative education program.
All right, hello. So, my name's Sean Robinson. Last time I was here, I was fortunate enough to be chosen as the next Mill River High School principal, and it's been a great six weeks. I'm excited to be here. So my understanding is some folks have some questions about kind of this alt thing and what's going on, which is great, because it is one of the things that I had questions about when I came on board, too. So my hope is I can give some clarity. If we have questions, happy to do that. I have some pictures and some slides. Like most things in education, when you ask a simple question, the answer is not so simple, so I'm hoping to give some context, kind of guide you through where we are to end in kind of what we're doing, if that makes sense. So, some background. A couple of years ago, Vermont passed a beautiful piece of legislation called Act 173, which really requires school districts to do a couple of things, mostly to support students for whom kind of general educational experiences aren't always successful. Act 173 is like 100 and some odd pages long. It requires a couple of things that most schools were already doing, but needed some renovation to. One was an EST system, which is an educational support team plan. So, a group of people who would say, who's succeeding, who's not, how do we help them? An MTSS system, which said, okay, now that we identified who to help, how do we help? So these are two discrete processes. The third one was related to curriculum, making sure that you were offering a unified curriculum that made sense and wasn't just something that people pulled out of the air. And the last was about professional development, really saying teachers should be learning how to improve their practice in places they can help with, not some sort of third-party thing that you bought. So, at Mill River, these systems existed in various ways, and they've been refined over time and a lot of energy. So I want to just give some context there. MTSS says there are three levels of support essentially. And this is pretty typical for us when we're talking about supporting students both academically and behaviorally. Essentially, tier one is universal supports. That's the kind of experience you'd have in a regular classroom on a given day. There are things that teachers do every day to help support your general class, and you want those to cover about 80% of your class. Same thing with behaviors. That's like, a kid breaks a pencil, what do you do about it? It's kind of those normal things that a normal teacher would do, same thing class-wise, which include things like help, right? You know, hey, I have a question. Hey, I need some after, you know, can we meet after school? Tier two is really looking at students who need a little bit more. Sometimes they need a double dose of something. Hey, I didn't quite get it, can we do it again? They need it offered in a different kind of way or in a different setting. Maybe I have a really hard time with the novel and I need the audio. Lots of other options there. Tier three, typically, we're talking about kiddos for whom a traditional classroom in a mainstream way is a little bit tough, and that could look a whole lot of different ways and a whole lot of different supports there. Behavior gets talked about in the same kind of tier three tiered system. Tier one kind of classroom stuff, tier two, the kind of stuff where classes is complicated, and you might see some additional support, tier three are students who are engaging in behavior that really puts safety of others at risk. Ideally, you want tier one kind of across the board at somewhere in the 80% mark. Tier two at that 15% mark, and the tier three somewhere in the 5%. So that's kind of a long-winded story, and I'm going to help kind of get there in a second. I pulled some data from Mill River for the last year or so. A couple of things to know. This is lagging data, which means it's from like eight or nine months ago, which means it's not great in terms of in the moment. We have other ways of pulling that stuff once school starts. On the left, we have our star scores. We do an internal test a couple times a year. These are just averages kind of across the board. Top left is reading. I would say our, the bulk of our students are doing pretty well. That tier three in red is a little bit bigger than we'd want. We'd like that smaller. And then our math scores, for transparency, need some work. One thing to think about, and we're not going to talk a lot about sort of the nitty-gritty of data tonight, I want to talk about alt some. There's a question about the way the state has built the assessment system, and that's a statewide conversation about its efficacy, some questions that people have. Frankly, many people feel have questions about the efficacy of the state testing platform. It's why I'm not giving that information, because there's some real questions about validity and how it got done, and we can talk about that another night, and I'll put it on my soapbox. The thing on the right, though, are office referrals from last year. Our system was low-tech last year. We had about 1,200 office referrals. That's a pretty typical number from someone who's worked at other schools of similar sizes in similar places. Our percentage is actually a little bit better than I would have expected, given sort of people's feelings about lots of stuff. We're actually looking at about 83% tier one, which is great, 14% tier two, and then about 3% tier three. That's super solid and very typically and normal for us. Our system for tracking behavioral data is a little different this coming year, so I can give some better nuance, just for context. I had to go through each of the 1,200 individual line items inside of an Excel document and hand-code all of them. On the plus side, I mean, I read all of them, which is great, and it gave me some really good ways to look at data at Mill River. Downside, it's a lot to take in, and our system doesn't help with the numbers super well. And when you get another person kind of getting into it, it creates some challenges about like the quality of the numbers. As someone who's an educational researcher and did my doctor with a bunch of statistics, I would just say like, take it all with a grain of salt, and like, we'll do better as we get rolling. So back to this, this tier system. Mill River has had tiered supports for years, and we're refining those systems this year to build two tier, two tier one teams. One is for high school, one is for middle school, with that saying, how to support kids kind of broadly across the building, social, emotionally, and academically. Tier two is where our alt program sits in kind of that tier two into tier three a bit. We brought two people on board. I'll explain how we got there in a minute, to help really support, one, kids for whom the traditional classroom isn't working super well. There have been, from what I understand historically, a lot of efforts put in to support those kids, and this is an attempt and some support from the community and the board saying, you know, here's how we can help support those things. In some ways and in some cases, we would have to ship them out of the district to support them. So this lets us offer in-house support in a way that we haven't had before, from what I understand historically. Again, I'm only on week six, so if I'm not 100% right, I apologize, and of course, correct. Tier three, same as we've always had, we have that risk teams here in the building. We have a lot of behavioral support systems in place. So alt sort of fits in that tier two niche for the most part, and this year we'll also have a tier two team dedicated to folks who are working with kids who are in the margins. And so they'll be meeting at least once a month on top of existing systems to help coordinate some of that work, which folks are excited about. Our folks who work in tier two are often kind of independent contractors, and they are delighted at the idea of being able to collaborate with each other to help build a system that makes sense for all of our kids who are very themselves unique. So, how do students act as alt? We have an EST system, so if you're a student who gets recommended for an EST, an educational support team plan, it's because you're having academic struggles or behavioral struggles or attendance struggles, that team meets on a regular basis, sometimes once a week, sometimes every other week. It depends on how many students we're talking about. That team collaborates with stakeholders, like parents and other members of the community, to build a plan for this kid of how to support them. One of the things that we find is that sometimes the traditional academic setting is really tough for any number of reasons. It could be things at home have gotten really complicated, and it's just a tough position to be in. It could be a position where the student has been gone for a while, they've been out sick for five or six weeks, and they need a little bit of extra help. They could have a lingering skill gap that we're learning about, because as classes get more complicated, we suddenly realize that maybe I had a hard time in seventh grade, but eighth grade's killing me, because the gap is there, and we're noticing even more that maybe the team didn't see ahead of time. From there, our goal for this is that we want to support kids academically and behaviorally. Sometimes it's social or interpersonal, and they need some time to work on executive functioning skills. They need to figure out how to work through some interpersonal stuff. We want to support both of those ends, because at the end of the day, we want the kid to have a good academic experience. We also want to make sure that we're thinking about the next 80 years of their life, and you can't get into a power control struggle with people 24/7. It's not going to work as a human being, as an adult in life, it just isn't going to be successful. And so the EST is going to dictate goals and the length of time they'll be doing in it. Some students are going to be in a classroom, and we're going to offer them alt as an alternative, and they may be there for the rest of the year. They're going to be working in small groups or individually in a way where they wouldn't need an IEP or something that intense, but for them and their unique circumstances, we're able to support them in a way that maybe we haven't been able to before. For me coming in, my big push, though, was understanding that alt wasn't a final stop for them. They're not just going to be a quote-unquote "alt" kid or something like that. They're members of our community, they're members of our student body, who need some extra help. And a particular type of extra help that maybe the team feels will look a particular way, and understanding that we want to make sure that we're not putting students in a program or with particular faculty just because they're tough, or because they're having a hard day, or maybe we don't like them, or any like number of things. It's really important that we say, there's a skill gap, how do we fill that skill gap? The way we do that is based on the individual student and how the team as a whole responds, and then how does that student respond? They may need a little bit of time, they may need a semester, they may need a year. We'll see how it goes. How did we get kind of where we are? I came on board in June 2024. There were two open positions, so we're talking about kind of the reality of this. I inherited sort of an interesting situation, excuse me as I hit the wrong button. So we had an FTE for an alternative education educator, and one for a math and STEM position. My understanding prior to me coming on board is that this math and STEM position was a person who retired. There was some opportunity there to diversify our class offerings in middle school in particular, and that the position had already been offered two or three times. And then those people had decided that they were not interested in the position for any number of reasons, which include all of the usual stuff. I came on board after the board approved me. I came to our retreat and said, hey, can I rewrite this position to make it STEM in math rather than math in STEM, thinking, you know, could we get someone in who might be more interested in this like slight verbiage change? Brian was cool with that. I rewrote it a little bit to make it also just a little zippier, trying to kind of entice some folks. I also reached out to my professional network, and we had an applicant who came in, who was more interested in the STEM side rather than the math side, and chose a different position rather than one of us. So four down. I then went on to School Spring and reposted everything. School Spring lets you search people who qualify, and they give you a master list of them. You can hit a couple of buttons and invite a lot of people. So over the course of a week, I invited 45 people to apply. It goes boom, 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 boom. Anyone who had an updated resume was kind of in the area and certified. Here you go. They get an email saying, hey, Mill River would really love you to apply. Zero takers. So, that happened with the STEM and the math position. Simultaneously, this alt ed position, when I came on board, they'd already interviewed someone who was an internal candidate. They were thinking about hiring. My request was that we wait to hire folks until I came on board. It was that weird in-between couple of weeks, and I really just wanted it to be clean. And so that candidate was informed that, hey, we're still working through it. In the interim, someone else applied, who was highly qualified in that position. We interviewed them. So this sort of last-minute candidate was the candidate we brought forward. So we then had an alternative candidate and this open STEM math thing. Okay, and three math classes that need to be filled and three elective middle school classes that need to be filled. So with permission from Brian, I rewrote it as STEAM. We'll add arts to it. Maybe we will find someone who will do this for us. So we had one person who was also the internal applicant, too, had applied elsewhere. And so we interviewed that person. I left the position open for another week or two, but pickings get slim as we get into August. That's just a piece of transparency. And frankly, the person we were bringing in had enough background, and we felt it would be okay. So, we hired this person, and I said, okay, we now have to fill some scheduling slot problems. And luckily, skill sets unintentionally worked out pretty well for the most part. So here's our schedule for next year. We have three math positions, three math slots open. The person we hired for alt is a former math educator. That wasn't intentional when we hired them. It was frankly a gift. After we hired them, I said, hey, would you do me a solid here? I know we talked about this alt thing. I know we were really excited about it. Remember, had it here. Also a math teacher. You're cool doing two math classes for me, please? And he went, yes, no problem. And I went, awesome, appreciate that a lot. The third math class is getting picked up by the wonderful folks in our special ed program. It is a class attached to our pathways program that is often co-taught, and we're still working out the nuts and bolts there. So we cover our math classes, which is great, because honestly, I am not your math teacher by preference, despite my interest in statistics. So, from, so essentially, we then use this other STEAM and alt position, STEAM and electives, to try to figure out how do we mush this all together. And so essentially, this person will cover alt two periods while the other person is doing math. We then were looking at class balancing. We discovered that our US history class has the highest failure rate in high school, because it is a very content-heavy class. Our AP students do amazing things. The entire AP US history test, which is considered the hardest one in AP, everyone fours and fives, which is incredibly wonderful. And for folks that this is not a great fit for them in that kind of context, often have to take it twice. So we said, okay, we have some room in our schedule. We have some alternative options. We're going to pull those folks out. So with permission from the instructor, we said, hey, we'll take the kiddos who didn't pass it the first time and give them kind of a different opportunity. So we're not asking them to do the same thing they failed again, and instead are going to work through some alternative curriculum. With our end goal, actually, that we're going to have them pass the same final. That's the end game there. And everyone's kind of excited about kind of taking two paths to the same level of success. So we got that. And then the last three are our three STEAM electives. People are really excited about it. We had seventh grade in last week. We're offering an interdepartmental justice class that'll include some mock trials, hopefully some forensic science stuff, and for middle schoolers, they're super stoked about it, to be honest. Destination Imagination is very similar to Odyssey of the Mind that has been in middle school for a long time. It's just a different kind of program. That's going to be sort of small teams doing problem-solving projects essentially for a couple of days apiece for the semester. We're really trying to give them an opportunity to practice problem-based learning. So here's a problem, how do I work through it? And the last one is a project called Future Cities. This is more long-term, kind of with an engineering focus. You get sort of pitched a problem to build a future city, hence the name, and then you spend the entire semester building a diorama, doing a bunch of research about how nature works and how infrastructure gets built, and they're looking at kind of current event problem-solving stuff. So similar in some ways, but I think interesting enough where we got some parents who are just excited about it, to be honest. And frankly, this lets us, and it alleviates some of our scheduling problems. We have a lot of folks who have historically been kind of shoved into classes that, if you've been in the middle school, the physical plan's a little snug, and so this offers some opportunity there. Some transparency. This is not my ideal. It is a solution to a problem that I inherited, that I was given some support from Jody and Brian and the board to be able to fix. It is not, from my perspective, a long-term solution. It is a, this is a year of solution. And the folks who came on board, we shared that with them, that this is kind of where we're at here. Long-term, I'm interested to see what works, and I'm hoping all of this works for our kids. I think organizationally, it's not a great solution to a problem. I would much rather, I prefer clean lines across the board. But I think there's an opportunity here to give a group of kids across parts of our building different opportunities than the ones that they've had. And so my hope is to then reflect back on this investment of time and energy and people and go, okay, what worked? What can we ask for? What didn't work the way we wanted to? And then transparently come back and say, this is what we'd like to do for next year. So that's where we are there. Questions? That was a lot of information, and unfortunately, some of these things are just not simple. I wish they were.
I just have a comment. Thank you, Sean, for coming. You know, when personnel and the board is looking at different positions and they're not just, you know, straight math teachers, you know, third-grade teacher, it's a little difficult for us to kind of conceptualize. So I think that helped. It sounds like you're working through, you've got a couple of flexible people who are willing to try different things, so I think that's great. So I appreciate your coming and talking about it. I just did also, I have, you know, I'm old school, so when you talk about, the middle school used to have like six-week blocks of different specials. Do they still have that? This is going to be in place of that. Can you describe? Go ahead. I was just going to say, can you describe how that works?
Absolutely. So they are on semester-long classes, for the most part. So they have electives, much more like high school rather than that kind of six-week rotation that middle school has. So all of these classes that we're offering, by and large, are semester-long. They'll rotate through. Some classes are year-long, much like everybody else. It sort of is a mix there, but that six-week rotation isn't what we're currently doing. So I actually brought that up yesterday and today about it. I think either way is useful. I think the nice part here is that our students have some buy-in. I think a lot of those times with rotations, you just kind of inherit whatever you get. And I know in my last school, you would have a class with like theater as an example for six weeks, and you could have 20 kids who have no interest in theater at all, and that sets everyone up to kind of fail. At least here, and we've been pretty good, especially as we've added these additional electives to help people move around some. So I think my sense, and my sense from feedback we've gotten from parents over the last few days, is they appreciate the opportunity to kind of pick and choose, rather than have it kind of inherited. Also because of the middle school schedule, not for nothing, other than the elective is pretty regimented. There's not a lot of wiggle room, and this gives them wiggle room.
It's been over, I think, more than five years.
That has been the six-week rotation. Well, that was always a scheduling nightmare.
Only a year now that kids have gotten this Google Sheet where they get to see their preferences, and it gets the sixth graders really excited to go to the seventh grade.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
First of all, I appreciate your statement about the US history class, that students that fail get something totally different instead of having to redo the same thing that was drudgery the first time for them. So I really appreciate that. That's awesome. Couple of questions I had about EST process for this program. For the timeline after a student is referred, is it a pretty quick timeline and turnaround for kids to get enrolled?
So we're working out there scheduling-wise. We're looking at like once a week meeting or every other week, so we're talking a week or two, but frankly, like, there's enough flexibility here where we can make those decisions pretty rapidly. My hope, though, is just to make sure that we're being thoughtful throughout the process, and folks who have worked with me know I like my eyes dotted and my teeth crossed before we make a decision. And I want to not be willy-nilly about it, because I think we have to look at each individual kid really carefully about what's the appropriate setting, not a knee-jerk because they had a bad day or a bad week. So we got to find them happy.
Will there be a point where the student is also involved in their own EST meetings, so that they have input?
So my understanding is that they are invited at this point. My hope, working with. My hope, working with Cindy Jarvis, who is our EST coordinator, is to really ensure that those items happen. That's my expectation and hope, depending on a kid's sort of, you know, capacity and willingness to participate. It's not always, it's a, I feel like those meetings are very like adult meetings and are not always like a joy for a seventh grader to be in. But obviously, invited, the same thing with parents. I mean, we don't want to make decisions without their collaboration.
I'll add some comment to both of them, follow-up. It was great to have the explanation of what the alt is because, like Carol said, as we're sitting in on the development of, hey, we're going to approve this person and what does it actually look like? What's the implementation? What is it, what does their descriptive mean? Because social studies, everybody goes, yeah, they're going to be teaching history or math, they're going to be teaching this. So the explanation's great, and so is the STEAM because STEM is one thing and STEAM, now that you know where it's going. As this rolls out, do you believe that two teachers is proficient at this point? Or do you see, or is it too early to tell?
So, yeah, so two teachers is a, is a solution to a problem we had. So my hope is that we would have one position, one FTE for this alternative situation, and then initially go back to the same way we had pitched it with three math and three electives. I'd like to go there, but as we get rolling, let's double-check and see how it goes. I want to be able to have data for the team to talk about. And if it's ineffective, we need one, you know, we got to sort of figure out those things. My hope is to have a little bit better of a sense after we roll so that we can come back and really speak to that investment, the good, the bad, and the ugly.
And then if you go back to your tiered triangle there, I understand all the data, but they're not actually relationships between academic and behavioral as it's laid out there, right?
So what we'll find, so like some day that isn't today, I'll come back and do like a hard data dive with y'all if you want to. There is often an overlap between the two of them. The hard, so the tiers get used language-wise interchangeably between academics and behavior. They are often, when you're looking at a student, very, very similar, frankly. But sometimes there isn't coordination between them. And again, it goes back to like our current data here at Mill River. You know, the triangle, it's one-way on one side when we look at behavior and very much not on the academic side. But anyone who's been in the school will know that the, there's a lot of moving parts there. I did a quick skim of our math data as an example. We have people who are in AP Calculus who are certainly skilled math students who scored low on the STAR test. And that breaks my brain a little bit. And that's why this isn't like the best indicator in the world, but it's a little bit better in bite-sized than like a lot of other things we could talk about. And again, take it with a grain of salt. If folks want a hardcore data dive, happy to work with folks to make that happen. But like at some point, everyone's brains kind of melt because it's a lot to take in. So at least, you know, so yes, they're related.
But it is a board goal.
Yep.
So invite Sean back to hear more about a deep dive on Mill River data. Absolutely.
I did my doctorate on population statistics. It was like 10,000 data points. So like, I'm there with you if you want it, but like, I, it's what it is.
And then before we pop to Josh, I'll just echo everybody else saying thank you for coming in.
So this alt program is a newly funded program, right? This is the new, this is one of the new things we added.
Correct.
Correct, right?
This was a...
Yeah, so part of the conversation that we had while we were adding that was, and this, the presentation has, you know, alleviated some concerns about, oh, is this just a place where we're going to put kids that are hard to deal with? And so my question is, is as you go forward, how are we going, or how are you going to judge its efficacy? Like how, how are you going to implement changes when they need to be, or like how is that evaluation going to occur?
Yeah, so we're still transparently, we're still in the building phase in some of these cases. I think we've got to sort of navigate how we start. I think efficacy is related to individual student outcomes. Knowing that those outcomes are different per kid and different per student, I think there's a, there's a scaling issue with programs like this because they're really about individual successes, unfortunately, and sometimes that can be a little tough. My hope is to bring data related to how many students have been there, how many students then phase out of needing this level of service. That to me is a really good indicator of efficacy. You know, if we need 15 people through the first semester and that number goes down to two because the team feels like these students no longer need this level of support, that feels pretty good from my perspective. If students are there longer, I'd like, you know, you have to sort of dig down a little bit smaller to find those successes and those measurable goals. I think our current EST team is really dedicated to providing good data across a lot of different interventions. So my hope is to be able to kind of take all of that in and provide some meaningful context for some of those things so that we can measure. I'm also open to feedback, as folks are aware. If people have ideas of what that would look like, that's awesome, and I welcome those. We're trying to figure out, again, between an ongoing behavioral academic need that we see and then really just ensuring that we're being thoughtful about it and we understand, I think, and respect that this is an investment from the community and in the board and our ability to kind of do this work. And we do want to demonstrate that it's, it's energy and time and resources well-spent. It's something I feel very strongly about. We're just trying to navigate some multiple problems that have just happened related to hiring as we kind of roll.
Hey.
Stephen?
I have a question. So if this isn't the ending, you know, place for the, for the students, then what is? If it's not their final stop? Is it back to regular, you know, Mill River kind of track? Or is it, is it, are there other options for these folks?
So I think it depends on the kid. And some of that is, in a perfect world, sure, we'd be able for them to go back into a more traditional classroom setting. Alternatively, we're expanding our offerings related to flexible pathways. So perhaps that's the end after this. They go on to a flexible pathway as an opportunity. They do an internship, they go to tech. It could look a lot of different ways based on the student of what that could look like. And I would hope that the EST team would kind of think about some of that work as we move on. My point about that it's not going to be their final stop is, again, that goes back to, I think, a dedication to not allow spaces like this to become warehouses for students. I think sometimes if we're not intentional and verbal from the very second we talk about it, good-naturedly, we go off-track sometimes. And so I really wanted to articulate from the very, very beginning as we're talking about it that this is not the long-term situation for our students. And it may be longer for some and shorter for others, but that they are going to have to be successful, you know, and that there are a lot of ways to look successful. I know that's...
Yeah, I guess, that's just what I was thinking, is that not all students are necessarily going to find success in the traditional setting. And so maybe what other sort of, it's easier for them to get back into the Mill River traditional setting, but what other sort of partnerships and those sort of things might be developed for, for folks that actually will thrive maybe someone else or in a different environment?
I agree with you totally, and I think flexible pathways will be one of the places that we're spending some time and energy into after the year starts, finding community partners who are interested in working with students. What other opportunities are available for our kiddos for whom the academic setting in a traditional sense isn't super-successful? My hope is that if part of what brings them into an alt situation is behavioral, we can support that and academics simultaneously to bring them into a position where, being out in the community, they can represent our values and behavior the way we want them to. That would be kind of ideal. And if the decision ultimately is that going back to a more traditional setting isn't what they want to do or isn't going to be successful, that the team can look at it and find alternatives that make sense for them. And we're pretty open-minded to what that is. We're working pretty hard to kind of figure out how and what those look like. We're just not quite there yet. I think we have to play it by ear based on where the students are at.
Any more discussion, questions, comments?
That's great.
Can I take 60 more seconds? I'm going to use every opportunity I can to shout out our teams really quick. Mill River's an awesome place. It has been a great six weeks. First picture comes from our wonderful football team. Phil Hall is doing amazing stuff with our football team. He is building character and lifelong experiences for our students. They, in preseason, went on a field trip hiking, talking about personal goals and what it means to be a human being in the world. So humongous shout-out to our football teams. Next, we had seventh-grade orientation last week. Seven of our upperclassmen showed up to guard and guide and support. Seventy or so, no, that's an exaggeration, probably 40 seventh graders who were all freaked out about being here and excited and to come in on a Friday, volunteered, was super-cool. So shout-out to them. We also have a bunch of new teachers who came in. This is part of our experiences yesterday. We had some science experiments to talk about our relationships with the classroom and what we can offer to a classroom. They were good-going and game to create a humongous mess in the library with me, and I am super-excited for them to be joining our team. The energy's awesome. And lastly, our facilities team, I cannot tell you how wonderful they are enough. They are roughly two weeks ahead of where they planned to be. Part of that is because they've been busting tail, and they're working together super-great. So many folks have been in the building in the last couple of days have said things like, I've never seen the building look so nice, including parents of former students and students who came here. And they say, I've never in my entire life, even including when I was a student here 15, 20, 30 years ago, have seen the building this nice. They've been proactive, they've been helpful, they've been willing to help. It is amazing. They are also super-camera shy. I said, hey, can I get a picture? And they went, absolutely not. So we, I just can't say enough how wonderful it's been to work with this team.
And I'll throw one in. I was talking to William today, asking him, have we really ever had time to pressure-wash the building before day one? And I don't think we have, but you better believe they were that far ahead that they were pressure-washing every last little detail. You know, that's an easy one that, that you don't have to do, but they were doing.
And we get it because we've been listening to each other back and forth, to be honest. We said, hey, what do you need? What do you need from us on both ends of this conversation? Tim's been really right there with us, making sure everyone's holding up their end of the bargain. And I think that kind of relationship is going to continue helping the facilities in the building. And we have an enormous square footage that breaks my brain just thinking about. And it's six people, eight people who've been doing all this work all summer long, including that like really nasty week of when it was like almost 100 upstairs, still doing the work. And so I want to express my gratitude and appreciation for that. So lastly, Open House, September 12th, six to eight. Please come, it'll be great. We're going to do something à la Science Fair-ish with people in the gym and some presentations and some other stuff. We would love to have you. And I am now done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Absolutely, thanks, Carol.
Annual board meeting schedule.
So that was attached in the materials, and this is about the time of year when we sit down and we review this and we talk about, does it still make sense? And something I know Carol has been excited about doing, deciding when we're going to visit our elementary schools. And I think what we did last year was we identified how frequently and when, and then I went to principals and said, who wants this spot? Who wants that spot? We don't have to do it that way, but I...
Well, you know, based on the information from community engagement that I'll report out when it's our community report, it'd be really helpful to have it if principals would be open to having those on the second meeting of the month. That way, we could coordinate our community conversations with our board, with our committee meetings and then the board meetings. It would just, I think, if you, do you know what I'm saying?
I might have missed that because one of my batteries didn't, did you say the second Wednesday or the second meeting?
Well, the second meeting.
Okay, okay.
The second meeting. Because the community engagement is the second meeting. And so we're, and I'll talk about it more, but...
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah. It would be nice to have those at, in the elementary school. That way, we can use them.
So February and April, we'd shift. Because the fall, the fall, October and November are the second meeting, so that would work. But we could shift the February and the April.
February, there's not...
Yeah, February the second was the annual meeting.
Oh, I see.
But maybe we could shift the community to the first Wednesday, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that, swap with personnel at that time of year.
What's usually on the Wednesday, personnel?
But then move, go ahead and move the April one. The April one's easy to move. I can do that for you. So I'm hearing move the April one to be the first meeting, but leave, sorry, move the April one to be the second meeting of the month. Leave February and we'll just shift accordingly when we get there?
Well, we'll have the annual meeting, so I think we could actually even have a little conversation as part of that meeting somehow. We'll talk about that.
Before the annual meeting?
Yeah, so just leave it.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I am shifting April, right?
Yes. Thank you, Brian.
Did we have two meetings in April last, like this year?
No, spring break. We did have, I'm trying to think where we compensated for that. We have two April meetings. I think, don't quote me on this. Oh, we have...
Didn't we do one the end of April instead of the...
We may have...
Like April 29th or something like that?
We did some adjusting there.
Because I think personnel was involved in that for some reason. But I'm not sure the...
I think we may have had two February meetings. I think the way the meetings fell in February, I think we maybe had two February meetings. I could be wrong. But I remembered looking and going, oh, two April meetings, that's fine, because last year, we had dropped a meeting somewhere else. So it ended up being the same number of meetings throughout the year. But you're right, we did not have that second April meeting.
Well, what about the second March meeting? Could we move one of those?
Put an elementary one there? We could do that. Yep. So move from February to the second March meeting?
Yeah.
Yep, we can do that. That does leave our February 5th meeting a little light because there's not really a lot. Well, I could swap the risk management one. The risk management one is not a lot, and we can do that at any point in the year. Audit, we got to keep a little later because we likely won't have it till then.
That one March 5th, the reorganization one is pretty lengthy.
Yes, it is.
Meeting.
That's about all we do.
Yeah.
Yeah. I kept that note on there to revisit code of ethics and A policies. That was the first year we did that, but it seemed like that worked well. So I just shifted around the things we were just talking about.
Okay. We'll leave it up to you, Brian.
Okay. It will, and I'll...
You keep us, you keep us organized. You do a good job at that.
And I'll bring, I'll bring this as a material to the next board meeting so that you have the changed plan. And then, and then what we do every time at the end of the meeting, I tend to be the one that owns keeping this coming back. And I'll bring it up during agenda building and say, hey, we had planned on this, does that still make sense?
Yeah.
And if we, you know, this is, there's a reason on here, it's just discussion, there's no action. We don't actually adopt anything. We can change it at any point in time. So this is just our, isn't it better to have a plan than not? But we can always change it if we want to.
Works.
Excellent.
Okay.
Especially for new board members who have no idea what's coming.
We've still got the quarterly sports updates. We still have all the required by policy updates in blue sprinkled through there. And they tend to happen when they make sense to happen in the year. Was there anything anybody noticed this past year maybe that you, you went, wow, I wish we had that at the beginning of the year, not the end? Or at the end, not the beginning? And we've got the progress on goals and the board education piece in there periodically. I do think. I might add progress on goals to make sure we're hitting it at least every third meeting. So I might add it one or two times because I think we talked about that a little bit, doing that a little more frequently. Does that make sense to everybody if we at least hit that every third meeting to check in on our board goals? Is that reasonable?
Mm-hmm.
And if we do it more frequently, it might be a quicker conversation too, so.
Certainly help when it comes to retreat time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Anything else on the board schedule? If not, I bring the bylaws.
Great, thank you. Bylaws and when, when Andrea and I had talked a little bit about agenda, there, there seemed to be a little bit of a question of, are we going to have time to do bylaws? Should we put bylaws on? Or should we schedule some time to do bylaws that's more of a dedicated time? And, and it seemed like it was a good idea, let's throw it on there because we'll likely have some time to at least talk about how we want to approach it if we don't even touch the bylaws. Fair enough?
Yep.
So what do we want to do?
Based on the retreat, there was only the one edit which you have highlighted.
Yeah, so far we had really only, we had really only, and I don't even know what that was. I haven't looked at it.
Policy, A six.
Yep. That was the only thing we really identified that we wanted to change there unless we wanted.
I'm sorry.
It's way down on number seven.
We changed the policy from C three to A six, so we had to update it. We did have some discussion about maybe a committee wanted to change their charge. And then Len, you had some information that we maybe wanted to add to bylaws in addition to the charge? If we wanted to spell some things out a little more specifically for committees?
Yeah, and there's. I'll find it, just a minute. We did earlier board committee descriptions, charge and purpose. And there was a policy committee underneath, policy committee was basically the same that's in the bylaws. But then there was another section of roles and responsibilities. And I don't know where they went to. Buildings and grounds had the same thing, a description of the committee and then roles and responsibilities. And again, I'm not quite sure where they went to.
Within the committees or within the bylaws?
It was adopted by, these were adopted by the board. Because communities engagement committee, for example, was going to be approved at the next meeting. The finance committee was going to be approved at the next meeting. Negotiations, next board meeting to approve. The policy committee, the buildings and grounds committee and personnel committee were all, next to them said, okay to post. And those three had the paragraph that went with it and then bulleted roles and responsibilities. And the bulleted parts are not in the bylaws.
And I, I think, my recollection is that committees worked those up and did bring it to the full board.
Yes.
For approval. But that wasn't part of updating the bylaws. That was part of approving them. And I think they were on the website. I think they were posted.
They were somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I, I, I just think.
But if we want them in the bylaws, you know, we're looking at the bylaws. So we can put them in if we want them.
I think we can, I'd like to at least take a look at it and we may decide, you know, that, that it's a redundancy that doesn't need to be there. You know? But I, I, again, it's just my personal opinion to, that we need a more focused time to work on the bylaws.
When do we want to do that then? What do folks think?
Can I just, I, where are you getting all this? Is this something from?
Historical.
Yeah, something from ago. Okay. Yeah, no, I know it's in your hand, but I was just wondering when the board had talked about.
Well, and I tried to find that. And I could not. Because the by, the bylaws were adopted by the Mill River Board of Directors in 2016.
It was after 2016.
They, they were amended in 2018.
Yeah.
And amended again in 2022.
Although there's no date there, just the year. So I wonder if it was expecting that it was going to be amended.
See, I don't know.
I don't know either.
Because I tried to find, because I actually asked Brian for these and you sent them to me in April. I, I don't know when they were adopted and if they were adopted with the bullets or not. That's all. And we could look at that when we.
They should be in minutes if they were adopted, there should be some minutes or.
I looked.
See it.
I didn't see it, but that's a, you're talking about a computer and Lenny.
Ah, don't tell yourself, sure.
If you just read all the minutes from 2022.
I did.
Yeah, and you didn't see it.
I didn't see anything.
I trust your reading comprehension.
I think it was before then, Len. I think it was before then, yeah.
It could, it could very well be. And I remember because when we were talking about the committees and putting them in the bylaws. And I, I didn't look at 2018.
I want to say it was, if I took a shot in the dark, I would guess 2019.
Well, when did we consolidate?
Yeah.
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
What's the?
Iteration.
That document I sent you, Len, does it have a title on it?
M R U U S D Board Committee Descriptions slash Charge slash Purpose.
Excellent. Let me see if I can find that. Ah ha, ah ha. Let me tell you the last time somebody actually edited that. And maybe that'll get us somewhere. August 2020 is the only time that document really has had much going on with it, August 2020.
Twenty twenty?
Yep.
And that wasn't included in any of the amendments?
Of the bylaws, no.
Yeah.
No.
So could, maybe you share that with the rest of us?
Yep, I can do that.
No.
Maybe for the next meeting or next time we talk about it.
Yeah. I'll grab that as a PDF and I'll throw it in whatever materials packet whenever we decide when do we want to look at it.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at the annual meeting schedule.
Yep.
And September 18th, for what it's worth, is pretty light.
Carved out a good half hour on September, say that again.
Eighteen.
Nine eighteen. Okay.
Other than that, it's all the way to December 18.
Okay.
Let's try it on the September 18.
Yeah.
The only thing we have slated right now is Mill River Guidance Update.
Okay. Yeah, and.
Not to say it won't change, but.
Sure, sure. That, we typically do that start of the year. Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Great.
And, and when we revisit, Len, so am I following that when you want to revisit the bylaws in more detail? You'd like to actually see more bulleted points of roles and responsibilities for, for the committees?
I don't know. I, I don't have an answer for that, Steve. I haven't really looked at the bullet points that are there on those three committees to see whether it's a redundancy or not. It may be, I don't know.
Because I, it's, it's coming to mind that one of the things that came up, and I think it was a question, it was at least a question for me. Maybe that should exist in the bylaws or be worded in the bylaws, but maybe, maybe not. Maybe it needs to be understood somewhere else.
Yeah.
And that was when we were looking at, thinking about administrative contracts and superintendent contract. And there isn't anywhere that specifically that lives in a committee. Like is it personnel, is it negotiations, is it finance, is it some blending of all of those? Where, where, where that actually happens? Who, who has the responsibility over that particular point? So that's, I don't know if that needs to be in the bylaws or not, or how we think of details like that.
It's a valid point.
Yeah.
Yep.
All good discussion we can have on the 18th?
Yep.
Okay, Stephen?
Anything else on bylaws? Seeing none. We will go to the Timothy IAQ bids.
Yes, and this is the third time you're, you're seeing this. We did one revision in the spring and this is one more revision. This is interesting because this is typically not how these things work. Typically, we have a grant and we would get a contractor. And the contractor would tell us that they can have everything done within the grant amount. So we would approve the grant amount. And then the contractor would deal with all the change orders on their end and you'd never hear about it. Because we had approved the full amount of the grant and it was up to the contractor to make everything work. We struggled to find any one group that was going to take this bid on. We had one group interested and they never submitted a bid, so we missed the deadline. So Tim said, you know what? Let me work with, let me work with the, the state and let's work through the process on this grant. And let me see if I can get approval from the state to contract it ourselves. So that's why we initially brought you several different bids for this project. Because we had an electrician separately, we had somebody doing the HVAC work separately. We gave you the exact amounts that they quoted us because what else were we going to give you? Interesting thing, when we do hire a contractor, they give you one amount and they don't necessarily bring to the board what everybody's going to do. So if somebody comes in low and somebody comes in high, that contractor figures it all out. You never see it. We weren't going to bring you a number that wasn't accurate, so we brought you the exact quotes. And as change orders come in, because the contractor goes, oh, actually, we, when we went to install this, we had to install it in a little different place or a little different way. So the costs that we incurred went up. We feel that it's most appropriate to bring that back to you for reapproval. Even though this is all covered by grant and there's no cost to the district or taxpayers. This is all grant funding. We feel like the most transparent thing we can do is bring it to you and tell you what's going on. So that's why you're looking at this change order from Control Technologies. We would ask for a motion to approve the change order. Allowable, work allowable under the grant.
I'll make a motion that we accept the CIT as proposed for $5,845 under the grant funding.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
I'm not sure I'm following it. So it's, in other words, like you guys are now the general contractor.
Yeah, Tim.
So these are each, and you have to bring each thing to the board. Whereas if we approved
Yeah.
a contractor, that would be, okay. That makes sense.
You're right.
I got it.
Yeah.
I have one question.
Yep.
And I know Tim is the better person to ask and I'm sure he's vetted it out because he's very, very thorough. It says under schedule, it says the parties will mutually agree upon a start and completion date. Period.
Yep. It's my understanding the work's going to be done actually pretty darn quickly. I don't think it's going to go too much further than maybe even this week. Yeah, I, I believe it's going to be done before kids are in the building. The contractor's doing the work. We need approval to be able to ask for reimbursement out of the grant, if that makes sense. So there, there's no delay necessarily. I can double check with Tim and if.
It's just weird how it's worded.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If that's not the case, if it's not going to be done before kids are in the building, I'll send you a note tomorrow.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Great, thank you, everybody.
Sarah still here? Oh, right there. Oh, I gotta flip back. Oh, mower bids.
Yep. So this is a request to purchase a mower using funding from the building fund. So we would ask for a motion to approve the purchase from R and D using funds from the building fund.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Sure.
Discussion.
Questions?
Which facility?
Clarendon?
Clarendon, I think.
Which has a good bit of acreage to mow.
Yep.
Do they mow all the way out to Middle Road? Is this that whole field that goes, or just the path around?
Yeah, we do maintain the path, yeah.
Where's R and D's gag?
Yep, where are they? I do not know where they are.
And I, I mean, it's not a big deal, but I know where Tomline Equipment is. I know where John Deere is.
They're in Castleton.
Oh, thank you, Josh.
They're in Castleton.
Josh, pretty quick.
Thank you.
Any more discussion, questions?
No, that's a good question.
All those in favor?
Three states over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One, two, three.
Okay.
Posed, abstained.
Thank you, everybody.
Motion carries. Well, committee reports, personnel.
Yes, we did not have a meeting tonight. Our next one is September first Wednesday in September.
Four.
Four.
Okay, thank you. That's when our next personnel committee meeting will be. But I do have a contract. And I'd make a motion to offer Joan Canfield a contract for educational support staff, 1.0 full-time equivalency.
I'll second it. Okay, I have my question, maybe Coral can answer it because she's here. What is the difference between an educational support staff and a para educator?
And I was going to answer that if somebody didn't ask. But if you want to answer it, go for it.
There is not a difference. Those are, they're the same, they're one in the same, except that in the master agreement, all of our support staff are classified as educational support staff with para educator being a branch of that.
Okay, so when we see that it's the same position, the reason I wondered is because I know that you can ask people to move and would it make a difference if they were down as a para educator and you wanted to move them to a position that you're feeling that's educational support?
It gets very tricky when you cross those lines from general education to special education. That's, that's what can really sort of trick things up. And even when we do that, it's still an educational support staff. So any para in this district is an educational support staff.
So can, so should the contracts all be similar? Why are we using, why are we seeing some para educator in some, or are we making a transition?
I've seen a para educator in a while, yeah. You used to. I asked. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This, this question, I think, last week.
So, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Coral. The older master agreements used to have two separate categories and one was special ed para educator and one was general ed. So in the past, you saw that because we had to classify and then you accrued seniority only in one or the other.
But it sounds like even more recent than the last two years
Yeah.
there's been a change because your, the master agreement went into effect in 22.
Yeah.
And we're coming up to the last. So I don't know when it changed, I don't know when we started calling it a different thing. But I do know that it's been in the master agreement for the last two years that.
So when we go to look to write up a contract, we, we tend to be pretty darn careful about, are we using the master agreement language? Because if somebody ever grieved a seniority piece, we'd pull old con. Because if somebody ever grieved a seniority piece, we'd pull old contracts, and if it didn't line up with the language, we might have a problem, so.
So we should expect to just see educational support from now on, and not see para educator or special ed?
Correct, correct.
Specify.
I know that when I submit my recommendations to hire, they do specify special ed para because you need to know where the funding stream is coming from.
So our internal documentation will make that note, the contract won't.
Yeah.
So contract's not going to tell you location either, but we often, like, when we talk about it, we often say, like, oh, yeah, this person's going to be this place. We don't put that on the contract because it's not contractual, because they could be transferred other places. If we put it on the contract, we'd have a grievance waiting if we transferred somebody, but it was on the contract. That makes sense.
Well, thank you for that, just trying to keep up.
Do I have two?
No, those are great questions, great questions.
Me too, Carol.
I have two questions, I don't know if they're great, but they're questions. The first one is, what school will this person work at?
That is a great question.
And my other question is, how many vacancies do we still have unfilled?
Is paras five now, or six?
Paras, give me a moment, it's been a busy couple of days. We are down to three vacancies for para educators.
Are you counting one that we're going to bring on the fourth, because we do have one?
Yeah, I'm counting two that are kind of coming your way, but in terms of candidates in the pipeline, we're down to three, which is, which is amazing. And were you asking about other vacancies too, Pat?
Sure.
Okay. We have a vacancy for a speech-language pathologist in three of our schools, and we, that's all I'm aware of on the special services side, other than a very part-time per diem contract for a physical therapist.
I'll just throw one more thing in to give a little bit more to Carol's question. The contracts that you'll see for support staff will have to be one of the following: educational support staff, custodial staff, food service, administrative assistant, registrar, or nursing support staff.
Okay.
But we always welcome questions.
Pat, I just want to give my standard disclaimer. It is the week before school, and children always arrive. And so what happens when that happens is, the vacancies I'm announcing tonight, probably going to go up a little bit. I've never seen a year where it hasn't. But as of right now, we've had a busy couple of days of interviewing and candidate pooling and all of that, so it's been really productive.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained? Welcome aboard.
And Joan?
And I'm done.
Well, you said nine, four for meeting, do you want to do six or 6:30? We will have some hires.
Yeah, let's do six.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, policy's the next one. We had a meeting last week. I will bring to the group for a first read G-15, which is our new policy on security camera utilization and access, and I will make that a motion.
And I will second it.
Discussion.
Did a lot of work on this puppy.
I think it took us an hour.
Thought it was good work.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. Our next meeting is September 10th at 5:30, and we're going to go for an hour and a half.
Has there been any discussion about cellphone usage?
It's on the list.
On the list, okay.
We've got a big list right now.
Nick, did you want me to invite any administrators to that one? Are you at the point where you want, like, the high school administration to weigh in, or do you want to just start with a board conversation about that?
Just a board conversation?
About cell phones, you mean?
Yeah, it's not far enough up the list yet.
Yeah, we'll see how it works out up there.
We got a couple of policies to iron out first.
Have us in town.
Next on the list, oh, Buildings and Ground, that's me again. We haven't had a meeting because we were on summer break, and according to Sean, things look great, and from what I've seen, things look great. Our next meeting is Monday, a few days from now, 8:26, 5 o'clock.
How about the elementary schools? I know that we've heard about the high school looking great, the elementary schools.
I stuck, I stuck my face in Wallingford, but I've only been to, like, the entryway. It looks great, but I haven't been through all the floors.
Now, was that Clarendon? The floors were shiny and the fans were glowing.
Drying everything up.
Drying everything up, yeah.
Community engagement.
We had a meeting tonight, we're trying to inch our way towards figuring out our community engagement and what that's going to look like. Our next meeting is September 18th. We are going to start at 5:45 with community conversations. We're going to invite the public to more of an informal conversation. We just want to see how that goes. Nobody on the committee has been on this committee before, we don't have any history, so we're just kind of, you know, throwing spaghetti at the wall and see what sticks. We'll then have our regular meeting following that at 5:45, 6:30. But we did discuss open houses and encouraging board members to attend those. And so September 11th is open house at Clarendon. I don't have the starting time for that, but I'll try and get that for you. Sean mentioned September 12th, there's a 5:00 PM spaghetti dinner, so hey, and a basket raffle, and then the open house starts at 6:00 PM. Timeth is 5:30 to 7:00 on September 16th, and then September 19th at Shrewsbury, there's a Pizza Popluck, starts at 6:00 PM, and September 30th, Wallingford's open house is at 5:30. We talked about what our role should be, and we're, we all decided that if you want to go to any of these, just be there, you can visit classrooms, you can, you know, say hi to parents that are there. We're going to try and get, you know, just some ID tags, I don't know, maybe just those plastic sleeves, and we can print something and have everybody have those. I know there were those little magnetic pins, but there's only one at each school, so if more than one person shows up, and you actually have to get quite close to see that they say school board, so we're going to try and do something that's a little bit more.
What about these?
Well, we can wear those, do they, but they don't say school board on them, I don't-
Yeah, they do.
Yours is yellow, mine? I haven't looked at mine, I guess I should look. But yeah, we could wear those as well.
Can we get, oh.
Mine says faculty-staff. Hey.
That's right.
That's why yours is a different color. It'd be nice if we had lanyards.
Oh, Connie's got some extras, I think, she always used to, we might run out of those, but, yeah.
This is mine.
I've got one from Fairhaven, but I don't think that'd be too cool.
Yeah, so maybe I should switch mine.
We like our neighbors.
So it says, yeah, so wear these, they say school board, but mine doesn't. I don't really want to be answering any faculty or staff questions, thank you very much.
Chicken.
Okay, so anyway, and so, as I said, our next meeting is going to be on September 18th. We're going to try and do an announcement for community conversations. If anybody has any input how that should, could, or should work, please let us know. That's it, I think.
And one thing, community engagement was going to work up a little reference sheet to help guide community conversations, that they were going to look at and bring to the full board.
Exactly. I think Brian was going to help with that.
I did say I'd help with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we had a meeting this month, and we discussed the budget season, upon us, we discussed the budget season calendar, as well as how the Finance Committee will try to work with community engagement to make sure that the board and the public is well advised and educated about the creation of our school board budget, of our school district budget. So, yeah, we're, one of the things we're hoping for is throughout this budget season, especially towards the end of it, when we're getting into February and March, that school board members are all feeling comfortable having discussions with their community members and constituents about our budget, and about how we've made decisions, and those sort of things, so. If you have any unclarity or questions, please let the Finance Committee know, let me know, and we'll do our best to keep getting you information that helps you understand and be able to interact with the public. And we would like for folks to attend their town meeting info sessions in March, and be able to be a resource during those conversations as well. And of course, our annual meeting of the school board as well in March. Yeah, Brian, do we, are we, I think we're discussing, discussing the budget kind of calendar cycle at the next board meeting?
Let me look back at the calendar. So, budget calendar, yes, we will discuss that at our September 4th meeting. Did we want to set our October next finance meeting?
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I wanted to know, can we do that now, or do we have to wait?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable to do now. But yes, for the full board, September 4th, when we get to agenda building, that'll be agenda building.
Okay. Book for our next finance meeting? I believe that was listed on the previous schedule, it was from last year, it was September 5th for the next finance meeting. Should we call that September 2nd, or sorry, October 2nd, as opposed to October 5th?
The only, only challenge with October 2nd would be, personnel would be 6:00 or 6:30, and then board would be 7:00.
Ah, that's a lot.
Yeah, that's the Wednesday. The Thursday would be the 3rd, the Tuesday would be the 1st of October.
Do we, do we want to call it the 1st of October?
That's fine by me.
Yeah, that should be fine.
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay. That's a quorum.
Excellent. We'll have our next finance meeting on the 1st of October.
What time?
What did we have this last one at? What are they typically at finance meetings?
He did five, yeah.
We did five, people, let's keep it that, I'd say for now, if that works, proposed.
Okay.
Sir? Yeah. All right. Fantastic. And we have some payroll warrants. Let's see, payroll warrants, all right. We have a payroll warrant of August 16th for $103,943, and another of August 16th for $18,999.20, for a total of $122,907.63. Do we typically do these separately, or lump them?
Separately typically.
Okay, can I make a motion to accept that payroll warrant as read?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
And that's everybody.
All right, and we've got some payable warrants. We have a general fund warrant for $377,568.71, general fund for $5,237.59, and ASP for $1,896, for a total of $384,702.30. I make a motion to accept these payable warrants.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion on those?
I'll throw one quick thing in, just because I think it's worth noting. We did talk two meetings ago about some of the accounts payable, and the cost of having a private contractor mow our fields, and tonight, we approved a new mower. So Tim and I talked a little bit about that, and, you know, part of the reason we're getting a new mower is because we see the cost of that, and that's not something that's sustainable. So Tim wanted you to know that that was a stopgap, hey, we need to maintain things, but that what he proposed to the board tonight was a longer-term, cost-effective solution, if that makes sense. And I only mentioned that because that was something that we did talk about two meetings ago, so.
So is Wallingford due for a mower replacement?
The Wallingford, I believe, was more of a staffing challenge, where Clarendon was an equipment challenge, so, yeah. No, good question, Pat.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
And that's everybody.
All right.
Transact other legal business. I'd like to make a motion that Len be approved to sign the-
I'd say, sign on behalf of the board.
Yeah, sign on behalf of the board for tonight's payroll and pay warrants.
My wife won't even let me do that.
Well, we're trying to instill confidence.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, we're not to discussion yet.
Oh, I'll second that.
Discussion.
No comment.
There you go.
All those in favor?
And that's because normally we'd have Nick sign, but he's the chair, so he's already signing. So we did need somebody else, that's for the public who might be wondering, what's going on?
Or the other board members.
Yeah, there you go.
I wonder a lot.
Any other legal business?
I have a question. I don't know if it comes under here or not. When is the new staff gathering? Has that date been set?
26th? I sent us save the date out.
Yeah. What time? What time? We don't have a time. September 26th.
September 26th?
It's likely going to be around, like, 4 o'clock-ish, because that'll be, do you have a more specific time, Jody?
Let me, I think that was in Deborah's presentation to the new teachers.
Yeah, on Monday.
On Monday, so I just got to pull that up.
And that's district-wide?
On the calendar, yeah, that's all the, yeah. New teachers will be doing something that day, we will invite new administrators, new support staff as well, but our new teachers do have an event that day, so it would be at the conclusion of their event that is here. So that makes it just a little easier for them to be in one place and not have to do something extra.
Thank you.
Any other legal business? Agenda building.
So, the 4th, we do have budget calendar. So, the 4th, we do have budget calendar. And, is that it for the 4th? Oh, yeah, professional development curriculum. We normally do that time of year, too. Doing both of those makes for a fairly full meeting, especially if, no, we put bylaws on the 18th. Okay, great.
Deborah doesn't have time on this. It is the 26th, but we'll get back to you with the time.
Okay, great. Anything, anything pressing folks think we need to do, aside from the budget calendar and PD curriculum presentation? It's busy season, so... That'll be, what, day five? Day five of school? Okay.
Do we need an executive session?
None I'm aware of.
Then we will adjourn by consensus at 8:31.